Now called to order for the board and review and equalization session number four. Are there any items from the public? Okay, we do have a revised agenda day. Brian Ross is unable to make it for his, so I'll need a motion for the revised agenda.
I move that we amend the agenda today for February the 11th to reschedule Brian Ross and Community Development Director's budget presentation.
I'll second that motion.
Been properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Welcome Commissioner.
Sorry about that.
That's alright, it's all good. Next up is Larry Hess, the assessor for session number four, Larry, welcome.
Thank you, how you doing? You haven't been outside, the snow started.
I've been out all day.
I was snow all night. We don't have anybody to come in and appeal. We got some changes, Cody's got, I think, three changes he's got to present that we made. The only thing I wanted to mention, we did have an Elaine Jones file with the Office of Tax Appeals. And she sent it to the State Tax Department somehow, then it got forwarded back to us. But after talking to her, she's okay with the value. I just wanted to, if you want to keep track of this, it's a District Falling Waters Map 7, parcel 39.2 and 39.3. But she's going to send in to withdraw from, she's fine after we talk to her. But I just wanted to let you know that if you want to keep it, just to keep track of it or whatever, but.
There wouldn't be any changes made then to the books then?
No.
Larry, if somebody does appeal to the state and they rule on it, does it still come back here for final approval or whatever they rule is, whatever they rule is final?
Yeah, they can either, like a taxpayer could either choose order of equalization or they can go to the Office of Tax Appeal. But once they rule on it, I think that takes care of it, just like if you all rule on it here. But sometimes it takes them forever, they'll hold those things up for like a year or so. They've had several like that. Anyway, so Cody can present those three, but we'll just be on standby if you have any, if we have anybody come in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon Cody.
How you doing?
Good sir.
Like you said, I just have three changes that we got to submit.
You look a lot older with your beard.
Yeah, I get that, I don't remember having a clean shaven face for a while now. But, so I have one, District 7, Map 14, parcel 12.1 for Harry Vannersdale. We had a shed coated incorrectly and we added a fifth wheel camper, so it ended up dropping his assessment by about 10,000, went from 69,000 to 59,040. So I don't know if you want to do them separate or all at once.
Yeah, we'll do them, well.
Probably gotta do it separate.
Yeah, let's do them separately.
Norrsdale, that's probably how you pronounce that.
Yeah.
Okay, and what was those values again?
Right now it was at 69,000 and it's going to drop down to 59,040.
You ready for a motion on that one?
Yep.
There to accept the value change.
I'll second that.
Been properly moved and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it Cody.
Then the next one is for Brad Unger. District map and parcel is District 6, Map 9, parcel 254. He called in, he got an increase letter and after taking a look at his property, we made two changes on it, we raised the grade and the condition. And after looking at it, decided we really didn't need to raise the condition, so I dropped that back down. So it was at 76,260, it's going to drop down to 71,820.
As Cody's requested for a District 6, Map 9, parcel 254, values going from 76,260 to 71,820, your motion.
Go ahead.
Still moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
The next one is actually for Mr. Gokenhour's property. So I don't know if you have to abstain, it's for the homestead, we have to really, we have to present the change still.
Oh, okay.
Because it wasn't keyed for 25 tax year.
Yeah, well I.
I want to turn the gavel over to Steve.
Okay, that one, here you go.
Yeah, we, we already, we did the exoneration.
Exoneration, yeah, this is for these, this year's.
The motion to approve. Adjustment? Yeah, motion to approve the adjustment for the homestead application.
Yep, homestead exemption, yep. It's just, it's lowering the assessment by 20,000.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
That's all I got.
Thank you sir.
Alright, thank you.
Let the record show that Mr. Gokenhour did leave the room.
Thank you.
We're gonna let him back in.
No, keep him out there.
I didn't even have to slam the gavel down, I'm disappointed.
At least you didn't throw it.
Yeah, they didn't get out of order?
No, everybody was raising all kind of heck.
Alright. Alright, Jack, you ready?
Yes sir.
Come on up sir. Next up is Jack Lang, the Facilities Director. Good afternoon Jack.
If I could, I'd like to introduce myself to Mr. Hardy.
Oh yeah.
Introduce myself to him sir.
Nice to meet you, yes sir. Of course as long as the snow, as long as the snow don't get too deep before we get home.
Man, I told, I told Gary one, I said, man, I am so waiting for May.
Jack, I gotta tell you, my insurance company says that I'm not covered plowing snow anymore. So I got two trucks, Salter, everything. I'm going to get rid of them and be happy about it.
Oh, if you told them to the right guy. I don't, that's one thing that I have talked to Gary about is our salt spreader that we use on the back of the truck, been here the nine years I've been here. So I tried this fall maybe getting some chains and stuff for jack chains work because it's really rusted up no matter how much you wash it up and oil it up. Everything deals with salt all the time it lays in it. So, so I kind of been pricing a new one, so maybe we can.
Is, is it a gas or electric?
It's electric.
That's the way to go.
Yeah.
Mine's gas.
Yeah, sometimes them gas ones don't want to start when it's real cold.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, so, but.
Stick with electric.
Yes, yes, so we price them. Another thing that I've talked to Gary about was we got the little John Deere tractor that we use, got a five foot snow blower in front of it. My tractor was made between 89 and 98. It still does what we need to do and the only trouble with it is an open station tractor. We get wet, we get cold, everything, so I've looked in a couple of options, just give me a quick rundown. A new tractor with a cab and a blower and a brew, or no, a belly mower from Michael Shade. Then plan two was, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Bobcat L-23. It's a little articulating 44 inch loader. You can get a five foot snow blower for it and you can rent it for five months a year. Yes, at $2,500 a month. A new one's 42,000, so about three years you pay for it in the long run. But you don't have the upkeep, you don't have the maintenance, you don't have the insurance on it. So it's just something we've talked about and nothing really in concrete. As far as the budget goes, I load, we loaded it by $3,000 and under the uniform. That's because I no longer have a cleaning department under my budget. So whoever got them, that's why the, we just took it down to that. With our six, seven, eight guys, we, $3,000 is plenty for uniforms for us. Back, back here, back here in August when Helene come up there and we was waiting in water, Gary let us go out and buy some knee high tingly boots so we could keep Baltimore streets safe from letting water get in it and putting sandbags out and stuff like that, so that come out of there too. So we're still in good shape at this time. And then the only other change we made was down here under Capitol Outlays, we had 2,500 in buildings and 2,500 in equipment. We just combined all the equipment. Anything we needed 750, we run it through a different budget because you got so much going on out there between storage for circuit clerk, county clerk, voters, central garage, you know, everything, so. Plus y'all just put a nice new roof on it, so buildings really in pretty good shape. Just some of the highlights we went through, it seemed like the past summer, it seemed like every time a holiday weekend come up, we was moving somebody. It was either the assessor's office or.
Clerk, you enjoyed the clerk's office the most.
Yes, we did, we did, we did. And then, and then in July, we put the new rooftops on. On July 4th over at the Judicial Center, so we had to be there for that, getting doors open and unlocked. Of course it was hot then, of course I was loving that one compared to now. We remodeled several rooms at Sheriff's Department, turned one great big room into a couple of offices for them, moved a couple of doors around for security reasons. What else have we done? We just got done, we just got done painting the classroom yesterday. They wanted the classroom repainted at Sheriff's Department, so we got approval to do that. We painted the back steps, the metal steps going up to 911, they was metal, kind of dungey looking, so we scraped and blasted them and painted them up. When we finally went through and repainted all the handrails in the Judicial Center, going down the steps, it was kind of like brown and white, so we got them painted. From February till about July, I was about three people down due to injuries and operations. Which we got through, okay, everybody hustled, everybody complained a little bit, but we got through it, you know, that's how it goes. Plus then we've also kind of added, we've been working on some ambulance stations. Station 49, we was there this morning, Ernold was stopped up, we redone some stuff up at, which one's up there? Inwood?
98.
98, yeah, I do not know these numbers, so you have to forgive me. We put some FRP board on the wall, it was having trouble washing down, getting the drywall wet. Had a condensation line that was busted, leaked in the bathroom, that kind of stuff, just a little stuff that takes time that they're not going to find a paid contractor to come in quickly and take care of them. We built shelves for the county clerk, we moved voting equipment, we've hauled voting equipment. Our guys driving trucks and the voters for the voting, we taken all the equipment around to the precincts. We did it in the primary, then we done it in November. And we remodeled the upstairs to build bank, redone the bathroom up there, painted up there, kind of got the upstairs ready for occupancy. Of course, changed filters, AC filters, monthly checks for fire extinguisher and stuff like that, so. And with all that, we done 1,311 work orders that everybody, Joe Blow put in, so.
How many work orders?
1,300.
1,300.
I thought you said. So, everybody, every, every department is now using that electronic.
Yes, every once in a while I'd get a phone call from your next guy coming up, the other land guy, that, hey, I need this. And I ain't got time to put a work order in, they say, yeah, come here, I'll go take care of it. Mostly it's something simple.
Well, it's good you're able to track them that way.
Sir?
It, it gives you the ability to track.
Yes, it does.
Your workload.
We, we can, and then that way I don't forget something. Somebody calls and say, hey, we got this problem or that problem or water running and somebody else calls with another one, they forget the other one.
You said the old bank, you talking about 110?
No, over here 400, 420.
The old, the old jail. The old jail.
The old jail.
Yeah, a lot of people know it as a bank.
It was a bank.
Yes, so we redone the upstairs, it, put on new bathroom.
Makes sense now.
Fixtures and everything in it, floor painted, painted whole upstairs, so.
I know you did some work for Nick at the airport.
Yes, we done some, we, a couple of doors, we hung a couple of doors.
Created a classroom, I think.
Yes, yeah, we done the classroom, made there for.
Marshall University.
For Marshall University, I wasn't sure if I was in this one or if I wasn't last year, I couldn't remember.
Name was this year.
Yeah, so, but Ms. Pope, she keeps us all straight, she's my right hand assistant and.
How many people do you have Jack?
We have eight total.
Including yourself?
Yes, yeah, right now I'm down to six, so we got two eight. Ms. Pope, she kind of stays there, so we really got five of us that's on snow duty tonight, so.
Y'all doing an amazing job.
They do, they work hard, the facilities look, look really nice.
What footage this county has and what they take care of.
It's unbelievable.
Plus the senior center.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then Plating stuff with, well, all the construction's been, I told, you know, you kind of run it from here to there, you get a phone call, of course a lot of these guys from Wayne's Bourne, different places, say, hey, who do you call around here for this? So luckily, I got a list of contacts, they along, so luckily I can help them out and call somebody and like, when the city come, they need to mark a line for water line or gas line or something, I can go down there to say, within 20 minutes they're here. You know, that's a pretty good relationship that you just don't shake a stick at, you know, so. So if I tell them, hey, anything I can do for you, you let me know, you know, I'll be glad to return the favor.
That's, that's the way it works and that's the way it needs to work.
Yes, yeah, especially kind of, that kind of stuff.
Senior Center is very appreciative of you and your staff, believe me. They compliment you almost every monthly meeting, about something y'all did or did this and that. They can't speak enough of good things about you.
That's good, that's, that's kind of stuff you like to hear, sometimes just one negative can throw a whole monkey wrench into everything, but.
It's that one negative.
It's that one negative, exactly right.
Everybody remembers besides the hunter positives.
Yeah, but everybody does well, I got a great team, I think, you know, get them all there. You can't ask for a better bunch of guys, I've never had any of them tell me no.
About the beavers, how they doing?
I was here the other day and I ain't sure sure they're not there. It looked like a whole lot of grass out there where I feel it used to be wet. But I couldn't cross the creek, I had the wrong shoes on, so.
Just checking.
Yep, so any questions, if you guys see anything that's out of place, don't be afraid to contact me, let me know. This young lady does a great job over here too, she, she keeps me in line, so.
Very good. Thank you, thank you and your team for what you do Jack.
Yes sir.
She was brought on just for you Jack.
You might want to get two more. You guys have a great day.
Thank you. Well, well, hopefully we didn't upset your afternoon, but we're way ahead of schedule, so figured it'd be easier to get you here, that would be for Mike, so if you're ready, we're ready. And next up is Will Orson, the fiduciary supervisor.
Good afternoon everybody, not used to afternoon sessions. 3,087, that's 3,087, that is the number of active open estates in Berkeley County. Our total number of full-time employees, as it has been for the last 20 plus years, is three. We have also, with this commission's blessing, been able to hire contractual work from one Marty Kisecker, a lifelong trust officer, most recently with Truist Bank. He's handled millions of dollars in fiduciary assets in the private sector and has agreed to come on and help us as long as this commission allows. This year marks my fifth year as your fiduciary supervisor, which is insane. I'd be lying to you if I told you I enjoyed every moment of it, but the mission is there. To ensure proper and due process as our probate laws allow is the mission that I, Colleen Stevens, Marty Kisecker and Tanya Bettinger strive to serve every moment your fiduciary office is open. Of course, our office is not this county's most glamorous. Our public safety is not threatened if my office decides to not do its job or do its job poorly. That being said, approximately one in five land transfers that happen in this county happen due to some form of inheritance. Our office ensures that proper parties are listed and the real estate and the chain of title for that real estate is preserved. All of this is so that further development and transference of land can happen as efficiently as possible and our county is able to grow and thrive as it has. We do it wrong, it could be months, years or decades before a problem is discovered. I say all of this not to guilt you, of course, into considering my budget request, only to emphasize the stakes at which my staff do their jobs. Candidly, I'm here to say this body can take pride in my staff and your fiduciary office. We are one of seven fiduciary supervisors' offices in the state of West Virginia. The other 48 counties of this state rely solely on clerks' employees to apply, interpret and times, at times adjudicate the rule of law established by our legislature. With all of our growth in the eastern panhandle, it should be noted that Berkeley County is the only county with a dedicated fiduciary staff. All of this is to say, my request is nearly identical to that of last fiscal year. I ask for continued support of Marty Kisecker's contractual pay to bridge the gap when we are busiest and allow us to take more, more time to answer our public's concerns and questions. I ask for your continued support to our supplies and travel and subscription budgets, small though they may be. The only difference I ask for today is a grand total of $11,051.83. That includes the FICA and PERS obligations of the county. That number correlates to a 5% increase in our total full-time staff's compensation and I ask for obvious reasons, I have a terrific staff. I task them with understanding and explaining complex probate and property law principles to a disinterested public, almost all of whom have something to gain by short cutting our process. The people you've hired are your most valuable assets in my department. I therefore only ask for your consideration to invest in them as far as possible as part of our upcoming fiscal year budget of 25, 26. That's all I have and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I just have, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have a, just a statement that I had to have property transferred recently and the paperwork that you gave me was impeccable because when I had to go out of state, they were asking for several things and I said, I think I have it here. So when the time come to transfer the property, that office where I had to go to just didn't quite have it all in a row. But your office did, so thank you, of course.
Well, unfortunately I've had the.
Well, unfortunately, I've had the opportunity to have to come to your office over this past year, and I just, you and your staff, and I feel very confident saying this, that you have handled everybody as well as you did me, there, there should be no complaints about that. And I know sometimes when you have to come and we have a discrepancy in an estate, it's a very uncomfortable situation when you have family members who see, are not seeing eye to eye and stuff, but, but your professionalism and your ability that you express to, that you care, you and your staff care about the people come through that door, is very important, and that's what, we appreciate that.
Just one quick question, Will, so I see on your request here, which is a five percent, and that's including what you need to put in for FICA and for PERS, I see yourself and Mrs. Stevens and Mrs. Bettinger, and you mentioned Mr. Kiesacker works for you on a contractual basis, is that where I see up here?
That should be line two-three-zero contractual, contracted services.
Okay, forty-one, the forty-one five, okay, okay. Just wanted to see.
Absolutely.
And that's the same numbers you had last year?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, Will, thank you.
Not a problem.
Only question I had.
Yes, sir.
You guys got anything? Hi, Will, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Not a problem.
Mike, you ready?
I am ready. You ready?
Yes, sir. Next up is Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal. Afternoon, sir.
Afternoon. I'm very short and simple, probably not quick as my brother, but.
Well, he said beware of you.
Basically, mine, mine is, majority of mine is staffing cost. The only increase I am seeking is department supplies and materials. Last year was twenty-one-seven, as for twenty-nine-five this year. And that reason is try to replace some radios. Fifteen with new, new radios, fifteen with old radios. I figure we can buy five at a time, twelve thousand dollars, five radios, APX Motorola four thousand. So, hoping to do that, then do the other ten, and the court security grant, maybe we get a pretty good shot of getting some of that funding. Our uniform is still elevated, this is the last of three years for the vest, we bought ten, and for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget request, be the last of those three years. So, that's to go down, ten, twelve thousand dollars.
They do have a shelf life on them, too.
Five years.
Five years. So we have to think about that pretty soon again.
Sure, set by thirty of them, we rotate at ten, 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 and this will be the final ten for the next two years.
And look at it for the next year's budget, and start putting up.
So that's my only request, we're trying to get some new radios, and they're expensive. We're using twenty-five hundreds, they've been around a long time, and sometimes they don't work very well in a building. I was taught the numbers on the radios by how much dollars they cost. These are Apex, APX four thousands. That's my only real increase, we're seeking some funds for radios.
Okay, Will. Only question I have, I see, Mike, and I'm just asking just because I'm new, so I see you have a line item in here, two-two-one for training and education, one thousand, and two-two, and two-two-three for professional services that you did not receive last year.
I did not.
This is for new training and new-
Always for training and physicals on new hires.
Okay, got you.
Just keep moving money around.
Okay. Everything else, your budget looks flat, except for your new radios, which we need to make sure you have good communication, and so we're not buying all those at one time.
The court security grant's been very good to us over the years. Last year, we didn't, we sought new radios last year, we'll seek new radios again through spring court grant. We can only ask, ten sounds better than thirty.
If it's that we're the busiest court in the state, I would bet that they would look favorable to us for the grant.
They've been very generous with us.
We were surprised this year's court security grant came in with very low.
Funding was needed elsewhere, is what I was told.
I have a question, Mike, I just wanted to thank you for the person downstairs here covering every day, it's been a, I think it's a good thing for our community that people feel safe when they're in here, there's a lot of money that goes through here, and we appreciate the fact that you work with the commission to make that happen, and we want to thank you for that.
I'm quite certain that the general public does not understand how many people come through our judicial center. Our court cases, our cases per magistrate, and believe me, I know this information intimately, I work very hard on that, and our, our per caseload for our magistrates and for our circuit judges are by far greater than any other county, and there is a phenomenal amount of people that are coming through our judicial center a year, and-
It ain't getting worse.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your staff and keeping everyone safe, and-
First of February, there's been four hundred and eighty-nine wrongful, sir, that means evictions, just in one month. First three days in January, we was up to fifty felonies, number's already given out. I was a career a long time ago, but I wouldn't get laid off from here, I am, corrections in this, so.
Our magistrate sometimes do twenty times the caseload as other counties.
I married one of them, I know.
Yeah.
I hear. But the other day, how they, there are dockets on, believe it or not, and that goes to prosecutor's office, to victim's advocates, to the police, it's just, it's a long, the long line that no one really knows what really it takes to make it go around.
Yeah, a lot of hard work done in that building.
A lot of moving parts, as I call it.
Yes, sir.
That's all, gentlemen. Have a good day.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
All right, we'll go take a break, away ahead.
Well, Larry, where's your best pizza from?
We're back in session. Well, Larry has to present his budget.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, sir.
Well, this shouldn't take long. It's a short one. It's the same thing I do every year, pretty much, with this, with this account. I keep it, try to keep it as low as I can every year because I have the other budget that I back up all my bills with and salaries or whatever. But, so for this, this year, actually, the bottom line is that I've dropped about $46,000 off of my budget from last year. And the reason, and the reason I did that was because I could do it because I had, like, Renee was making $74,000, she retired, so I replaced her with a $35,000 employee. Extra money like that, I had three or four people quit, and so I had extra money. The only thing I did this year was took the salaries that I have current, added them up, and I was down to 12 employees out of this account. So I had 16 last year, but even with the open spots I have, I'm still about, oh, I guess, $46,000 less.
That's just in the salaries, though.
Yeah, well, salaries plus my salaried, because my salary is actually in that 4 or 6 account also.
Okay.
But with the current salaries, my salary, I'm about $40,000, $49,000 less than what we had last year. We had a million and 14, we had a million oh fourteen nine ninety this year just for salaries and overtime. And I did have to raise the overtime up a couple thousand dollars. I had 12, three ninety-one in last year, and I overspent my overtime account this year a couple thousand, so I moved, I did move that up from 12, three ninety-one to 15,000 for overtime. But still...
It makes sense if you had fewer employees that you had to have some more overtime, obviously.
Well, yeah. So we did a lot of stuff last year, like, we scanned all that stuff. We, I had 19 scanners go through the winter last year. But, but any rate, I'm down from salaries plus increase in the overtime by a couple thousand. I'm still at 965, 142 just for total personnel services. We had 1,014,990 last year, so I'm down 49,000, just in that top part. So what I try to do is keep, like, when you, if you go down through all the line items, just like for printing, we spent... we spent a little more printing for printing last year. They've been, printing's been going up, but I raised that from seven thousand to nine. All the others are pretty much, uh, the same thing. And I don't have all the line items on this account that I have in the four or seven account. So basically, this budget, the way I look at this budget, and it's been working for me, is it's mostly all salaries. You know, so I play with that up and down if, if I can drop it down because the salaries are down. If I have a couple people retire like I did with Renee and, you know, I can cut that back. But, and I usually for all the line items, the contractual services, the commodities and all that, usually, I usually get like forty or fifty thousand from you guys to help me. The rest of it, I'll, I'll pay out in the four and seven account. So I've watched both accounts, so I don't want to go over on either one. So I just get a little extra from you guys for, for the, um, the line item stuff and the salaries. And I usually keep about sixteen employees out of this account. I was down to twelve. This puts me back up with the open spots. Uh, I have, uh, four open spots, three, two full-time, two part-time. And I just hired somebody last week, so that takes care of one of them for this next year coming, but. But overall, uh, the budget, my total budget is a million fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars. It's odd that it's almost exactly the same as the, as the top, uh, total personnel ser- all, all but two bucks. Came out the same way, almost matched that. But any rate, uh, that's pretty much, pretty much all I can tell you about unless you want to ask me about any questions about the line items or that type of things.
Yeah, I just got a question. Uh, Larry, on your, uh, insurance line item, group insurance expense.
Yeah.
You're, you're down, uh, ten thousand compared to last year. Is that because of that many less employees?
Well, it's, uh, it's, it's a percentage. It's, I use ten percent for the, for the, uh, insurance. So whatever the total employees line item is, and it is down, so that's why it came out less. And, uh, it's just like with the, uh, FICA, it's down too, probably because that total, you know, total salary line plus overtime is down. So if you take seven point six five percent for the FICA, it's going to be down compared to last year because I had more in that, that, uh, top line. Same way with insurance, I mean, with the, with the, yeah, insurance. I mean, PERS is what, is it what you're talking about, the PERS?
No, it was, no, it was on, actually, insurance.
Insurance. Well, I think, I don't know if I had last year, what I had on the last year, was it one thirty or one forty?
Yeah, you were at one forty, now you're at one thirty?
Yeah.
And that was because of not as many employees?
Yeah, I had sixteen employees. Now I'm down, but I need to get two more full times back. So a total, uh, is thirteen. I would have thirteen full-time employees, which is the hundred and thirty thousand dollars and two part-times.
And with your, Larry, with your loss of employees, uh, you know, over the last year, uh, you still have enough people to take care of the public when they come in in a timely manner?
Yep. Well, I've got, I just hired one lady. She just started actually yesterday. But I have another full-time open spot. I need to bring another person in, then I'll be full at the counter. Every year I want to be full at that counter in July.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because if I'm not, then somebody's off sick or whatever, because that's the busy time. And, and, and every year it seems like somebody quits, or I look out there and I'm thinking, nobody's at the counter, you know, but, uh, I got one more person to hire, and I'll have a full, all spots are full at the counter, so. But, uh, but yeah, we're in good shape with, uh, with, uh, employees right now. But sixteen usually works good for me. Two far, uh, two part-time and twelve full-time out of this account. And, uh, but. Also, I don't know if you have any other questions on any of that?
I do.
I did. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you, you keep referring to out of this account. Do you have more than one revenue stream?
I, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, I didn't.
I don't, I don't, this, with this being my first budget presentation from you, can you, or someone explain that to me? So you have a revenue stream that comes from the county, and then you have a secondary revenue stream or?
Well, okay, uh, let me say it this way. Let's see, back in ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, believe it or not, I was here. Uh, they did the reevaluation, all right? So those three-year cycles, we had to get, assessments were down to, they were all over the place. You'd have, you look at somebody's assessment on a brand-new house, it might be twenty percent assessment. You look at another one, it'd be fifteen. You look at another one, it'd be forty. That's one of the reasons they did that reevaluation.
Legislature put in place for the assessors to go out and do reassessments.
Exactly, because it was.
It was legislated to do it.
Yeah, the assessors had a lot of control at that point. But any rate, when they did that reevaluation, what they did was they allowed the assessors to have up to two percent of the county budget, if needed, okay? And then every year when I do that budget, uh, that I have to, they created a panel called PVC. It's property valuation, um, something. But they monitor, yeah, they monitor us. But the bill, when they passed that reevaluation, allowed the assessors to get up to two percent of the, of the county budgets to use for extra work that came along with that reevaluation.
Two percent of your portion of the county budget, not the county budget overall?
Total.
Total.
Total, so.
Wow.
My, my office will get two percent of your all's budget, uh, the school board's budget, the city of Martinsburg's budget, uh, Hedgesville's budget, uh, all of them.
And do you hold that, do you hold that in escrow or is that used for operations?
It's a separate account, but I, it's, it's, they give it to the assessors actually to use for anything we need to do extra money for what we need to do because of the extra work we had as a result of the reevaluation, which we have to do all these extra studies every year, so we had to hire more people and we have to be monitored. I think we're the only department that's monitored by the state tax department or anybody else. But with that two percent, it, they allow me to have that to just use to make sure I can get my work done. Problems are nothing against you guys, but the assessors in the counties couldn't get enough money from the, their commissioners to do their job. And so they allowed the assessors to have that extra two percent.
They did the same thing for the transfer tax for the, for the clerk also. They took a portion out to make sure that the clerk was made whole for some stuff too.
Yeah.
In the last legislature.
Corp security stuff.
Yes. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, now, do you, do you use outside agencies to help you with that kind of stuff? So you have to hire like consulting firms to, when you have that additional work, that's what the money's for, or is that's used for your, to pay your overtime?
I use it.
You do that in-house?
I use, in other words, both budgets, pretty much, uh, I keep them, they're, they're pretty much spent out.
Okay.
In other words, this budget here will be, I won't have a whole lot left over if I use whatever I get approved for my budget here.
Okay.
Okay, the evaluation fund is the same way. My employees and most, all of my employees, the higher-income employees are paid out of that evaluation fund. Uh, and it's, it's about a million four is what I'm expected to get this year, I think.
Okay.
And, but with my salaries and my expenses and everything out of that budget, it's almost up to the million four. So it's just about a break-even thing, you know? So that keeps me, you know, just to the point where I get two percent, I can just get by with that. Same way with this. What's left over, I get this amount from you guys with the other. So I just kind of split them up. And part of my expenses are paid from you guys, and I use the other one, uh, pretty much for, to pay the other half.
I just didn't understand that second revenue part. I, I didn't, I've never heard that before. So, and then the last question is, so you have eleven FTEs, like full-time employees, and then you have four open spots?
Well, I have twelve.
You have twelve?
Twelve, and I got.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see. And then one falls down underneath the part-time, the, you have an open full-time.
Yeah.
Right now.
Two, but I just replaced one, so I only got one full open time and two part-times.
That's typically where you stay all the time, is between twelve to fourteen employees all the time?
Yeah, I use about sixteen out of this budget. I usually, I usually thirty-one, thirty-two employees. That's what I've been usually keeping in both.
Thirty top, thirty-two employees and some paid from this budget and some paid from your.
Yeah, it's about half and half.
Half and half, okay, all right. Sorry for so many questions. I'm just trying to get my head around it, so. But the two percent actually has more money than what we're actually indicating.
Sure, sure, I mean, two percent of the entire budget.
About one point four, right?
It's about one point four.
And we're, we're budgeting just a little over one.
Yep, yep, yeah. And that, and that kind of keeps me just, it's, it just works that way. It's been that way for several years. But, uh, so, um, um, that, and I, that budget, you guys, you know, I do that in December. It's, it's due by December fifteenth every year, but it comes to you all. You all see that, and you have to sign off on it and, and approve it to make sure, I mean PVC will allow me to have the two percent if it's approved by you all. And since all my salaries and all my expenses out of that account is just about the same thing, I've, you all have been approving that every year, so I use that budget. If, if I run low on this, which all the line items doesn't cover all of the line items that's in both accounts, like for printing, I've got nine thousand one seven, I got nine. I spend more than that in printing every year, but I just make up the difference out of the other account. So it's just, it's a backup. It's a backup. And, uh, so.
That's been in place since the early nineties.
Yeah.
Larry, is that a single signature account as well?
As far as I know, yeah.
That's what I understand.
They, but it's audited by the auditor's office, that.
Yeah.
That two percent part.
Yeah. They don't let you guys mess with that.
Yeah, I don't want that, so I'm just saying. We do our, yeah, when we do our own audit, it's not included in, in our audit.
Yeah. Larry, are you the only, are you the only elected official that gets a two percent? Like, I can't believe every other elected official's not beating on the legislature's door for that, because that's, that's sizable.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think any of the other departments have that, as I know of. I mean, I don't know.
Because as the general revenue budget grows, you'll keep pace with, with growth.
Yep.
Not to give anybody any ideas, but.
That's what, well, no, that's what helps me out actually, because as it grows, and the county's been growing, and we're lucky here for that. You know, all the counties don't get that growth like we have, but that budget keeps growing a little bit. I can keep backing you guys down a little bit if I can, just like I, this year I dropped it fifty, almost fifty thousand dollars. So I just, whatever, you know, I don't try to use any more than I, than I need. If I can get by with the other and make it work, I, I keep this one as low as I can, you know? You know?
Thank you. Sorry for so many questions, but.
That's, that's fine.
Everybody else got anything for Larry? All right, sir, thank you.
I do want to say a couple of things maybe. Uh, I know it's snowing out there. You guys want to get home, maybe?
No, we can't vote.
We can't leave the four.
Oh, that's right.
It's not sticking on the roads anyway.
Yeah, it probably won't on the road.
Yeah, not for a while.
With that, anyway. But, uh, what do you got in mind for, uh, increase in the salaries this year? Because, uh, it's been three years, and man, I got my employees is crawling all up over me, just like, I need, you know, and I've been raising some, you know, for extra work that they're doing, and I've been getting some other salaries up. I want to try to get the lower-income salaries at least up to around forty thousand, if they've been here for six months or a year and they know how to do their job. Because you can't hardly get anybody.
What's your people starting at?
I'm starting them out now at thirty-five, thirty-sixty. Yeah, that's seventeen dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Is basically what that is. And you, you can't, I've had people that, you know, that made applications and they say, I can't take that money. I'm, I was making fifty over here, and I can't, I just can't come to work for that. So I've been trying to get the lower salaries up to try to get them up to forty. And I was, we were starting them out at thirty-two, uh, thirty-three, thirty-four. I'm up to thirty-five. I got them up to thirty-five right now, but that's still all I could get them up to. The lower salary is up to at least around thirty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty at least. Because you just can't keep them in, you know?
Yeah, we understand that. We understand that, Larry. And, and we do understand that none of the employees have received annual pay raises for three years.
I know.
So we're taking that in consideration as we digest this budget and chew it up and spit it back out.
Yeah, well, I'll probably have a little bit of money to give them back to you this year in July, more likely. I can't move any of that line item stuff out of the salary lines, and I can't change any of that stuff, so.
But, but your greatest concern, concern is getting the starting salary up to around forty, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah. And, and I, I tell you, you know, the, always when you guys gave a raise, it's a, it's a percentage. And what's happened over the years that, that I can see that in my department, that, uh, if you're a high-salaried income person, you're going to get a nice raise where the starting out people, they can thirty-five, forty, whatever, they don't get a whole lot. If you do that for the last three, four, five raises that was given, and a couple of them were pretty nice, fifteen percent, you know, different things. It makes a bigger gap between the lower-income people and the higher-income people, and it gets further and further apart. And I don't know if you've considered, you know, giving a flat across-the-board raise. I could do that in my department if you gave me a raise and you said, here's ten percent or whatever for the employees. I could, you know, give them out the way I wanted to, but.
And that's true. Those dollars are given to you, and you spend them how you so fit. That's on you.
Yeah, I want to put it on you, though.
Well, I, I'm okay with that, but I'm just saying, you as a, as an elected official, and you know the law probably better than I.
I was just kidding.
Um, no, but we understand that, you know, we do.
But I think that's why the salaries, the lower-income salaries are so low, and the higher-income salaries keep going higher because of that. So that's why I'm trying to get the lower-income people up a little bit more to kind of, you know, close that gap a little bit.
I understand.
You know?
Yep, we do.
So, but my employees would appreciate anything that you could do this year.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, sir.
Any other questions or?
Have a good evening.
All righty. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Take care. We'll take a break. We'll take a break.